One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
She opened me and then she laughed. Yes, I don't know what that means exactly.
If only it were in its whole year.
Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening, James.
Welcome to the public session for abatements and supplements for the board of assessors. And this evening there are only three items, two of which are for 2019. This property was double built, in the sense that it was transferred prior to April, so this party should not have received a bill for the property. And that's what we're debating. The second one, I count 1932, that's the property that was on this house. It's like. So these two are abatements. 2018, the same property of above was transferred prior to April 1st of 2018. Caught up with the tail of the dog and.
So what is it, 2018 to 2019, wouldn't it only have been one year that was missed, missed on?
It was, it was, it was twice.
Oh, okay.
This is not the same spelling as Frank Lloyd Wright, I would guess.
I don't know, I've never.
It's not about.
Anyway, those are yet any questions?
We have a motion to accept the abatements as written?
Some move.
Second? All in favor?
That's it, pretty simple, a very light.
A light agenda.
Perception.
A pretty dual tie.
That's right, I really sing.
Jim, that was, that was.
We'll take a singing song at the end if you'd like. So that's all you need, one, one page.
Anyway, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you too, Jim.
Yes, we'll see you coming next week. See him maybe Monday. I mean.
You're gonna be in?
Well, but it's got to work, it'll be good. They'll throw me a different corner, whatever. All right, enjoy the holiday. Merry Christmas. Oh, we need a motion to adjourn the assessors meeting. All in favor? It was our, it's our agent anyway. Well, we need a motion, oh, now we're gonna open the select board meeting. At five o'clock, very good, have some time, need a motion to sign the warrants.
Oh, make a motion and sign the warrants.
There you go.
That was for you. Second?
All in favor? We have warrants? I didn't second it.
Make a Jason, I wasn't here.
But no, it's warrants. We're not doing minutes, we're not doing minutes. You can't second the minutes if you're in here. Very good. Need a motion to approve the minutes of December, that's December 23rd? December 11th?
I want, we approved the minutes of December 11th.
You have a second? All in favor?
Although, wait a minute, I wasn't here.
You can't make a motion.
I can't make a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written. Yep. All right then, and, and it was, it's. Old business Rogers Island funds, we actually dissolved the CD and we need to make another motion for the exact amount. So I'll make the motion that we put $15,000 in the designated fund to keep Rogers Island going. And $65,220.04 and four cents in the agency fund, and we are back the agency.
Second then.
All in favor? ATV trail into Lubeck. I would just like to say one thing, and then I'm gonna let Jason speak, because he's been doing a lot of research on it, or anybody else on the select board. All we did was make a motion to allow a place for the trail to either begin or end. And the ATV Denny'sville Trail Club is gonna be working on a proposed trail that will go through different pieces of properties and all of this, which will have to get permission from, and it's probably gonna take a year, who knows, two years, to get it all approved. And when that proposed trail is presented to the town, and if it does affect, have to cross a local road, they will bring it to us then. So none of, there was quite a misunderstanding.
The town actually has not a bit of that on the trail path.
That's right. Unless it crosses local roads.
And the state, and the state says, Tracy, you know better, that they can go 1,500 feet on the road, period. And this is gonna cross personal property. And actually, in Whiting, I have opened my land to ATVs, and it's been positive. I saw a handicapped child riding, riding with his family on the trail. And he thanked us for opening the trail, because that allowed him to get out and see eagles and hawks, things like that. So as far as ATVs on the road, I don't know where anybody got that.
And as far as South Lubeck, they would only have to have 1,500 feet, and have to have a reasonable reason why it was crossing that road. And it would all determine where the, where the trail goes, and the trail is for multiple amounts of right of ways before it's re- recorded.
There's some.
And I believe you spoke to some of the businesses this week, Jason?
Everyone is open, yeah.
And what, and what was their take on it?
Their take, short English, was hell yeah, what can we do to assist you guys? What can we do to make this happen? Is what they, what they want.
That's a follow-up to when I went out to the Denny'sville meeting several months ago. I immediately then went to all the businesses. And got total positive responses, asked them to look into what it would entail. Really, if misspoken or misinterpreted, was that the vote was simply to allow them to do what is an enormous amount of work, to look at the private properties. Who knows, they may not even be able to get here.
That's right.
But they didn't want to do what can be months and months and months and months of work if there were no possibility of this happening at all. So really, what the vote was, is the support for them, because they do everything. If and when the time comes, the signage from the state, that's all part of what they do. The maintenance of the trails, that's what they do. So state roads are state roads, you're not allowed.
That covers South Lubeck, by the way.
So that's South Lubeck, Dixie County. And again, private roads is when we cross that bridge when we get to it, or don't cross that bridge.
There was never any talk by this board on making it illegal all through the town, riding on the roads. And I'm aware there's a, there was an email floating around there, that kind of misrepresented what was said at the meeting.
And there were some towns that have done that.
Most of the towns actually in the area have, the roads totally open.
And one other information, further information, if you were to look at the, I think we handed these out. We went back and looked at a comprehensive plan, and under recreation, it says that the town in 2010 voted to accept the comprehensive plan as written. And it says work with public and private partners to extend and maintain a network of trails for motorized and non-motorized uses. Connect with regional trail systems where possible. So this is as important as a town charter. The comprehensive plan is something that you really should have spent a lot of time writing, and I know they did. They worked with the COG to write it, and I don't know if anybody is on here that was on the comprehensive plan committee?
I was on that committee, and that was a big help, but from both of the visioning sessions, everyone had, had a survey, all said they wanted some sort of a network.
Yeah, and that's not on a local road, that might involve crossing a local road, but it is to not involve driving under down a local road.
I think also part of it was the yellow apartments and golf cart accessibility into town for seniors.
Right. And actually, what you see out on these ATV trails, as I've been on them, and unfortunately, I don't get enough time to be on them, because I'm always working. Most of the people on these trails are old, like me.
Watch it.
They're all my age. Honestly, they're all older people that, they're not out there ripping the land up, they stay on the trails. The trails are nicely done. They use them for horseback riding, walking. And I've never seen more wildlife than I have on the back. Or of an ATV trail, but the thing is, we also have to stand up for our disabled folks. A lot of folks can't walk these trails around here. They just can't simply do it, children, some children can't do it. What better way than go for, I see it all the time, my land in Whiting, I see it all the time.
Yes, go ahead. Somebody had asked me about ATVs on the beach.
That's state.
And I. No.
Yeah, that's state, but, you know, my thought was, we would have to.
No, you know it.
Go through the shellfish, I mean, because I remember Julie talking about the dogs not being able to go on the beach.
It's a state law that they can't ride in the beach, so it's a moot point, there's nothing to talk about, unless they wanna go to the state.
I had heard people mention that, well gee, what are they gonna be doing driving these all over the beach? Well, of course, I don't know where they got that from, because it's been a state law for a number of years that you can't take an ATV on the beach. Why? They don't know, because you can take an old vehicle down there.
Inspiring in Denny'sville, if they do 12 or 15 scheduled, like, rides that the club puts together. And all of them were like $30 entry to go in, so let's say there were 10 of them or 20 of them. That money then became a scholarship for the town they went through, for kids. Or it went to, they've had contests, as we mentioned in the meeting, cleaning the area. And they said, trust me, you know, you wanted to win, so you didn't just stay to the track, you'd wander and pick up garbage anywhere if you couldn't get it. And they come to scholarships, and from all different towns that they pass through, so.
They get also junior ATV, which teaches the young kids growing up how to be responsible, how to take care of the trails, safety of riding. You know, it's, I think it's a good thing, and like Jason was saying with that, you know, with the kids. You take a handicapped kid, or an adult or whatever. You know, there's a lot of activities that he can't do. So I mean, to be able to get out into the woods like a lot of us take for granted, I mean, that's a good thing.
Well, I just think it'd be lucky for the, for this club to get through permission from all the people they're gonna have to get, go from Whiting to town. So I think the work, the work's really falling on them. But I was open it to the public here.
First of all, I just wanna say that I have no objection to try to land on our ATVs whatsoever. You mentioned that there was a motion for the, that's the way you used earlier, it might be the wrong word, but I don't know what the proposal is on the table, and I don't know what you approved, so.
It was just support.
We approved of an ending, or you can either look at it as an ending or a beginning of a trail somewhere for them to start to work, which we designated as Stockford Park, so then they're gonna have to figure out to get, how to get from Whiting to Stockford Park. We're not involved in any of that, so if they can't get every single permission from conservation lands, and if, when they bring the proposed trail back with everybody's permission, I think some of it goes maybe through Julie's land, I'm not sure, but different, different tracts of land, then if the trail has to cross over one of the local roads, then it would come to us.
Now, Stockford Park is not written in stone.
Because a lot of businesses have three. Well, we thought it was better than center of town.
There's many places in town right now, many businesses, that wanna host this land in stock. They don't wanna miss out on the revenue this is gonna generate. And I have a piece of land myself, I would give them the land on. So that's just a target. That is just a target.
Yeah, there wasn't something for them to work with, to get to, that they didn't, it's just like two points. You know, there's a line between A and B.
It was not hypothetical.
Yes. Grammar.
Could be personal.
So a couple, a couple more things, I own a business, I've had a property management business for 11 years, I wasn't surveyed, so part of this, I think, goes back to just opening up the process. I watched the selectman meetings where the issue was discussed.
But it was advertised ahead of time, too.
And very pro, you know, the good side of things. But personally, I have a lot of questions, and I think having a process for fully even support the trail development to get the questions out on the table would be useful, in general.
Did we do it with the walking trails? Did we have a discussion with all the conservancies on walking trails?
They don't cross public ways that I know of.
No, but they.
I think, I think we tried to address.
Excuse me, involved town insurance, you know, the other questions I have, I'm not gonna argue about it at all, go ahead.
This is private.
Yes, and I'm so, I'm really, like I said, I'm very all for private land owner rights. It's the public crossings and any use of public facilities that raises the discussion for the public, and what the impact is on us, on our taxes.
Absolutely correct, but we don't know where those are yet.
You know, any of that.
State law gives them 1,500 things.
So that's on, if they stated the very far right the law says. And so that's, it's the process, okay?
I agree with you there.
It's the discussion of the pros and cons, open it up, you know, have it either, you know, an announcement that we want all businesses involved, not just, I've had, well, you have, I've worked, so I can't always get to the meetings, I left early tonight. Well, I work for hospitals, so I can't leave. And I think the public, no matter what, I do too. So my business, for 11 years, has been property management, and I've rented to over 100, over hundreds and hundreds of people over years, from May to October, mostly. I've had one customer from Hampshire ask me about new TVs and riding, and they brought their equipment, and they were thrilled with the trails, like they couldn't believe the trails, they loved them. But what I think about from my business are the rental properties in town that I have, or used to have, that customers come every year to, you know. And so, you know, I wonder about noise, and I wonder about activity, especially in the village. I do live on South Lubeck Road, as you know, so I do wonder if the park was mentioned at one meeting, and somebody had, and I think, I'm not sure which person mentioned it, if it was the Denny'sville ATV guy, or Dan Daly, mentioned that the DOT might work with people to get to Quoddy Head. So then, you know, of course I listened to that, right, thinking, well, where is that crossing gonna go, or how does that work? Questions, questions that citizens have a right to ask without having a confrontation, I believe me, I don't want one. Just have lots and lots of questions. So where is the forum for those questions?
Well, we did get a few questions, and many people wrote and asked questions. But I think in order to have a public input on the trail, we had to give them a point to work toward, and I don't see it Quoddy Head right now, because it's Stockford Park. So until we give the ATV trail a master, I didn't, I wasn't at that, I mean, actually, I was, I was having an operation that day, so I didn't meet him. But to have, Derek, to have the, I spoke to him on the phone yesterday. He said he's gonna come, get all the tax maps, get permission from the different private owners, and then once there's a proposed trail, that is when the public will be involved. Because right down to moot point, there's nothing happening. And if we don't encourage them to do it, they won't do it at all, and it'll be just like the dollar store.
But let's, let's go back.
It won't come here.
Now, when I opened, when I opened my land up to the ATV, I didn't have to ask anybody's permission, because this is my land. And these landowners, they give us ATV, they don't need anybody's permission to do this. And we have not okayed any roads to be tripping on.
No.
And it came from this email that went around.
And the problem is, if we don't look like we want to improve access for what has been a long time tradition in Maine, then they're just gonna, why would, I wouldn't be, if I was him, I wouldn't do all of that work if I had people who are like protesting against something they don't even know about, they don't even understand.
Well, we don't.
Unlike the walking trails, this is gonna bring revenue in, okay? The walking trails, right now, have cost the taxpayers $600,000 in lost tax revenue. One quarter of our budget is gone. And if any of you folks ever sit in to our public meetings on the budget, and I ask you all to do it. Yes. You won't, you will know how hard it is with that $600,000 loss. For this town to operate, we've got to do something, or everybody's taxes is gonna go up 10, 20 percent. We, we can't keep going the way we're going. I've been on it for four years. It's scary to watch this budget, the way it's going, and we've got a hell of a job to hold it for days.
I, I've heard at times that I live on Main Street. I, I don't know if this was said before I came, I'm sorry I'm a bit late, but I understand that this was approved by voters. And I feel just because I purchased in 2015, it's not my right to come in and all of a sudden just erase all of that because of how I feel. I mean, I don't want people in boats either, but I'm here where there are boats. I don't want people on bicycles, because my neighbor was hit, was, had a concave, and it's had her job broken, you know, I have all kinds of reasons too. But I see the younger friends that I have who have children, this is a major way that they go out and do recreation. It might not be the same way we did it in the 50s, but they are out there with their families, it's a family event. And so to just say no to it, and I have to say, the emails that I saw were not representative of the facts, and that really makes me angry. Because I don't know why people feel they have to provide misinformation to try to stir up a support. Give me the facts, get your support that way, but I'm angry about it, I'm just gonna say that, I don't know if the person's here and wrote it. I'm still speaking, just for a second. So I'd just like to say, we can't, because many of us are over 40 or over 50, just dismiss something for families with children. I really have to say that they're wearing helmets, they're acting responsibly, horseback riding's dangerous, there are a lot of things. But if they're asking for permission, they're being respectful, let's take all this into consideration. Maybe the board could appoint a facilitator for the dialogue. That's my suggestion. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Hello, Martha Powell, I did, I did read some of the emails, so that, that kinda got us here. And Jason, you mentioned earlier, in passing, something about the golf carts and the Sunrise apartment stuff?
No, no, that wasn't me. Nope, that wasn't me.
Yes, you did, you just mentioned, five minutes ago.
No. Michael then.
All right, Michael, sorry. Mentioned five minutes ago that, that there was something about.
He's behind you.
Sorry, Michael, about getting golf carts and so forth. And I think the concern that, that some of us heard, and you say is completely bogus now, is that there would be people who are unlicensed or vehicles that are unlicensed on town streets. That, to me, would be a problem.
We never, we never spoke about that. It never came up.
Good, that's wonderful. So what I'm hearing is that the select board has merely said to the folks out in Denny'sville, you wanna look at putting ATV trails that would come through Lubeck, that would stop somewhere in town, that would go through private property, and then come to us about crossing streets.
That's what you heard.
And then we'll have the big hurrah, whether it can cross the street there, or somewhere else.
That's very.
Fine, that's fine.
That's exactly what happened.
Good, thank you.
I, that's been in my head a few times, so, I ride ATVs, and when I moved to Lubeck, I actually looked to see if there was an ATV trail. I also run sled dogs in front of my ATV, and I've been.
You have horses down the water street, I know.
I wanted to say that I support any recreational trail that comes down in here, because it's not just ATVs that use it. I need hikers out on the ATV trail, I need cross-country skiers out on those trails. And if they could come into Lubeck, and I think I, the elderly King's mentioned once, but most of the people I meet on the ATV trail are well over 60, and they go, I've never seen trails as clean as the trails, Sunrise Trail and the trails. Can't think of the other ATV club, but I, I joined it out in, I think towards Cutler.
But just to be fair to Karen, no, not, there will be ample time to answer a million questions, we just don't know what the questions are yet.
Well, I like Barbara's suggestion. I like Barbara's suggestion about having a group or a committee, or, I forget the word to use.
Facilitator for discussion.
For a discussion, to, to, you know, periodically, periodically go forward, people come together and ask the questions, we can, you know, try to get answers if there are answers to the questions. I know I've sent questions to the board, I have a list here tonight, I'm willing to be with you. But, you know, maybe better served to have a, you know, group together. I'm not opposed to this, I have had a lot of questions. So I, I don't care for that characterization, you know, about opposition. I think everything I've read on people I've talked to, it just raised questions. And I'm gonna make that point over again through this process, because I'm not here to make it us against them, them against us. We do wanna go back to Jason's point, I don't think the 25 or 30 people that have bought houses here in town from Summer Keys, and that can be documented, the numbers, it's in the 20s at least. Former or present Summer Keys.
I know who they are.
Attendees, I don't think they, you know, bought houses here to have ATVs in the village, we're talking about the village, okay?
Where did that come from, on roads? Where did, where did the road thing ever come from?
Well, crossing and parking down at Stockford Park, there's four rentals right there. That was discussed. So that's the kind of issue that the town, that we wanna talk about. It was discussed that perhaps tax credits could be given to landowners in one of the meetings, so.
That's from the state.
That was discussed in the meeting, so how does that kind of abatement affect the rest of the taxpayers? So that's another question. I do not expect these questions to be answered tonight, but there are a number of questions. So again, if there could be a committee or a group, I'm willing to be on it, and I volunteer in a minute.
I don't see a reason to have a committee right now, because we haven't even gotten a proposed trail.
And I'm not suggesting a committee, I'm talking about a facilitator between landowners who are going to give the. who are going to give their property.
But that's not up to us.
And the users, when that comes to the Select Board.
That's not, that's beyond our purview. This is all about the Denny'sville ATV Trail Club, who will come and talk individually to each private property owner, and it is just not, it's not the town's responsibility to do that.
We can't tell a landowner.
Well, they could opt, they can have it anyway on private farms.
Yes, sure.
They're just being respectful.
So we don't know how it is going to impact, if any, local roads until it's done, and it may take three years. Actually, I said to them the other day, let's see who gets their project done first, the Wharf or the Trail.
Well, it's private people, we know it'll be first.
You're right.
I, I don't understand why there's a lot. I don't see a lot of ATVs going anywhere. I mean, maybe in the 80s, 90s or something.
The dog's not a name anyway. That's a misconception.
I think there is a confusion or a complication with the image of the motorcycles. I, I think that's where the confusion comes.
You folks down on South of the back, you have Harley's going by your place all the time, all summer long, and ATV isn't here.
Not even close, not even close.
I hear some loud motorcycles going down there.
Okay, and then Julie's.
I just had a question, I think ATV, it's a, it's a, wheels and kind of, what are you, what are you talking about?
It covers both of them.
All both of them? Because half the time, there would never be a snow around here, you know? But the only thing, I, I, on the Sunrise Trail, skiing and bicycling, it's beautiful, and it's just great, and you get on the paddles and go down some tries, and it's.
If I'm not mistaken, and I might be wrong.
If, if, if there are times when you were close to.
Dan, we have two more people waiting. Go ahead.
When there are times when, in those certain circumstances, I went out skiing a lot, when there'd been maybe 15 or 20 snowmobiles, then a while, maybe they aren't as noisy and smelly than they used to be, but they were, it was just not a pleasant experience to out riding or skiing. In certain areas in the pasture, and I don't know what it should be like here, off the Sunrise Trail, you see a lot of, the snow is all dug up towards springtime, and it's hard on land, it's, it's hard on animals.
They, they shut the trails down.
Well, Pat, I don't, I don't believe we're talking about snowmobiles, so this is, we're not talking about snowmobiles.
Tracy, Tracy, can you answer that?
Who said both?
Some trails, yes, some trails they do groom, and it's snowmobile accessible.
Right now, it's all ATV.
Right, but right now, is the ATVs, and they close it in the winter when the first amount of accumulated snow, I don't know the exact amount, but then they open back up in the spring, usually they like to try to get it open by Mother's Day.
Is that the Sunrise Trail?
Yes.
Is it closed?
Well, no, some of it is open for snowmobiles, yes, and they have groomers that go through.
But then if it's Monday.
We have a couple other people that wanna talk, I don't, I hate to interrupt, but this lady here, and also Julie, go ahead.
Yeah, I can see how a, a trail like this would bring a lot to this community, and I have met some of the people on the Sunrise Trail. We do pathfinders, and once in a while.
What is your name?
Jean Backus. Once in a while, we do walk those trails. I'm still, because we live in South Lubeck, we are concerned about where it's gonna cross, but I guess that's in the future. But I am still a little concerned about the start and stop spot. Most of the ones I've seen with the Sunrise Trail are not in villages, they're usually outside. Is this set in stone?
No, we just gave them, we just gave them a target.
Well, I'm pretty sure the start is in Whitey, and it's right by the town office, isn't it?
There's more than one, but we, we just gave them.
But for Lubeck.
We just gave them a target on, on a mount to shoot for. There's about five or six other places where landowners have stepped up and said, look, we'd love to have them here. There's businesses that want them to come to their business and unload their EPVs for the business, for the revenue. I talked to H and B.
Will those businesses be right in the village?
I talked to H and B today, to David, and he said, whatever he can do, he says, to bring them here, Dave's out the road, you know?
Yeah, I think that would be a little better.
That's kind of right.
Yeah, because Stockford Park, I mean, these people come with trailers and trucks, it seemed like it would be difficult for them to walk here.
I want to apologize to you on that, and I said, you know, we're gonna pick a spot, let's just give them a spot on a, on a map to go to. Yeah, it's kinda my fault.
Well, it can be, and, and you know, Julie, when we were talking, so we were given a chance.
I own 75 acres of trust, and I don't know if I'm gonna be approached or not, probably. I haven't made my mind up yet, we'll discuss it. I also own $20,000 brand new, so I decide that we use on the trails. I take my grandchildren. I have a best friend who is handicapped, lives in a wheelchair for the rest of her life. And if she's well enough, I would like to take her on the side of the side. I'm a nice generation Lubecker. We own about a fishing boat. I'm chair of the Safe Harbor Committee. There's a lot of things in this town that have changed a lot lately, I understand you're worried about the noise and stuff. I don't like it when the motorcycles whirl through my place, I hate it, you know, it brings me right clear of the bed. I'm actually a South Lubecker by my father's side, so I understand, but I also know what it's like to get on a trail, and they need to stop somewhere and get gas, and to get food, and, you know, when they go somewhere, they wanna look at stuff. I mean, we get out, we fish, and we do all kinds of stuff, but I, I'm not too happy, and I wish you guys had more outrage about the bicycle trail, because I'm worried sick, I'm gonna hit somebody going out the road. Sorry, I have to put that out there, I, I'm sorry, but that's exactly how I feel about it. You know, I'm scared to death, I'm gonna hit somebody. My other house in Crow's Neck, and when they had the bicycles in there, he got screamed at by people that were riding, he was going 10 miles an hour, he was bird hunting. You know, it's a lot of controversy. I can't see where it's gonna end or anything, but, you know, I understand. I can't get to the store now to pack in the Summertime, because there's so many people here. That's all I gotta say.
Hi, is it true that the State Park, Quoddy Head's being considered as one of the points?
No, not to our knowledge.
That was never brought up?
No.
Somebody said something.
Somebody mentioned it, but I can't even fathom how you could possibly get there. You can't go on 29.
You can't use a state road.
No.
No.
It's a lot of misconceptions.
Yes.
Yeah, I have a feeling they cannot go on conservation land, I don't know. No, that's not true.
Are you sure? I think somebody said, wouldn't it be nice if we could get.
Could I clarify, because I did listen to the meeting, and it was either, you know, Dan or the.
It could've been me, I would love, if they, if the ATV, if there was access to get all the way to the White House, I think it'd be great.
What they said was, they had a connection with the DOT, do you remember that, in the meeting? And that that connection, you know, I don't know if he said help, but would look at the access to Quoddy Head, essentially, that's what was stated.
That was, that was Derek, and what he said was, he's been very successful working with the DOT.
But you still can't go more than 15 under feet on a state road, so I don't know how you'd get there.
The Bureau of Motor Vehicles opposed a bill, you know, for utility task vehicles in the I R, the side-by-sides on public roads, and the state police considered them dangerous when operating with large, with larger, heavier motorized vehicles, so on the side of the road for any length of time. We all agree, we know of someone who was killed recently in Bangor on a UTV, doing a demo, essentially. And the State of Maine ATV and Snowmobile Guide states, not intended for off-road use, may be difficult to control on pavement and other surfaces. So that's part of the mix, it's like, how much traffic would there be on a public road?
Again, we never discussed it.
Right, right.
And this is all just.
But I think that's good for town people to discuss.
So Karen, what do you think about this idea that Renee has been working to coordinate all of this, that we have a little, we could put a little maybe tab on our website, kind of putting different steps of, you know, we, when, when there's gonna be another meeting about any progress that's going on with, with the trail. And then when there is, it'll be put on the public, our meetings are always public, and if they're not well attended, then.
Well, you ask me.
I wish, I wish every meeting just had this many people. I love it, and I think Jim had something to say.
Well, I'm not a citizen, so I have to ask permission to speak.
You go ahead.
Of Lubeck, but I'd like to remind everyone that land use regulations in Maine apply here. Town of Lubeck has no permitting process in place to fill private people what to do with their land, except for those lands that are in the Shoreland District. And land use regulations are in the Town of Lubeck, are the business of the private landowners, and you need to keep that in mind. I'd also like for folks to contemplate, how noisy was Town of Lubeck when it was at the heyday of the sardine business? There are, those of you who live here who know very well how noisy Town of Lubeck was when the sardine and fishing industries were booming. So, you know, please keep that in mind. Multiple use and low-impact use, which is what this will be, are permitted, even on conservation lands. And, you know, if you read some of the open space daytime conservation use, low-impact recreational use is a standard paragraph in applications for open-spacelands in State of Maine. The regulations that regulate these, these uses are state regulations, we have no control of that. And the last thing I would like to say is, you cannot legally force somebody to have a dialogue with you as a public entity about their land and its use.
Right.
There's no, there's no law that forces them to accept input from any committee.
Right, one, one thing I'd like to say is, when I moved here.
Anyway, that's, that's my.
A few years ago, when I moved here, I've been coming here since I began. I am from away. Everything was running up here, and there was 2,800 people that lived here when I moved here, 2,800.
That's amazing.
Renee, what do we have now, eight, 800?
1350, 50.
Not year-round, I'm talking.
No, that is year-round, that's a year-round census, 1,350, absolutely.
That's from years ago.
So it is.
Then, then the island has dropped, the island has lost 2,000 people. So this whole area is down just about roughly 4,000 people right now, 100,000. We're, as Heather Tinnan put it, we're grounded. We're gonna, we're, we're grounded, we're gonna do something.
1,263 is 2,700.
1,263, would you say?
1,263.
I mean, I, I, I brought up a family here, and I've got grandkids here, as does Mr. Sautell. He's, he's been here since the beginning of the town, not that he's older than anybody. I wanna see my kids be able to stay here, my grandkids be able to stay here. That's what I want.
So I think a lot of misconceptions were clarified today, we'd like to move on with the agenda. If you have any further questions, you can email Renee, she's been forwarding all of our, all of your hard written letters to us, and I've been reading them, hopefully we answer the questions.
I've read every one of them, and thank you for.
And thank you for incoming, we're glad that you're part of the town, and we'd like to have you come every week, every other week. We meet people here at the meetings, and please come to the annual meeting, that's when it's really sad, when we don't get enough people out.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have less people than this, and we're deciding how to spend $3 million.
Yes.
Generally, it's specified as low-impact, non-motorized.
We are at signing the recycling resolution.
Have you read the, the recycling?
No, I haven't.
I have read it.
Oh, so and your proposal is to accept?
I, I know. I will make a motion to sign it twice. I am so into this, that.
We're getting reimbursed, is it not? Is it reimbursed from the state?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, okay. Still in session, so you're welcome to stay, but.
Told you we should've served coffee.
Yes. We're discussing, actually, the state is considering reimbursing municipalities for recycling, which is a wonderful point of, of the agenda, and I think Renee, would you explain a little bit more about it to us?
We can read this letter from the email.
You wanna read the letter?
Yeah, okay.
To Maine municipal officers, thank you for operating a recycling program in your town. Maine people overwhelmingly want access to recycling. We recognize the cost burden of managing municipal solid waste through your annual budget, and we know that market changes for recycling commodities are currently upending Maine of Maine's recycling programs. That is why we are asking you to join a new statewide effort to reform recycling in Maine by shifting the cost burdens away from the taxpayers. At the request of the legislature, the Maine Department of Environmental Protection will submit legislation by December 16, 2019, that would help solve this problem by establishing equitable, non-taxpayer-funded municipal recycling programs for packing waste. This type of extended producer responsibility law has the power to, one, save Maine municipalities between $16 and $17.5 million each year. Cities and towns would be reimbursed for any recycling costs by the corporations and brand owners that produce packaging into our state, like is done all over the world. Towns would still have control over their recycling programs and keep any revenues generated. Two, protect our recycling programs and make them more resilient to market changes. Right now, many municipalities are being forced to stop, cut back, or pay more than their recycling programs because of these feds. The key to making our recycling programs more sustainable is to change who pays for them. How can we help? One simple way that your municipality can support a recycling reform for Maine is by adopting the attached resolution language. Please send so-and-so. Okay, so where's the resolution language? Okay, here's the resolution. Whereas Maine's communities are struggling to maintain, expand, and in some cases are eliminating recycling programs due to rising costs and difficulty to manage materials, and whereas product packaging, which include plastic, metal, glass, cardboard, constitutes approximately 30 to 40% of the material, managed by weight in Maine's municipal waste management program, and whereas Maine taxpayers currently unfairly bear 100% of the cost and pay an estimated $16 million to $17 million each year to finance the management of this material through fragmented and increasingly expensive disposal of recycling options, and whereas producers of product packaging have little incentive to minimize wasteful packaging or increase access to recycling, and there's no organized coordination between the producers of packaging and municipalities that are responsible for disposing of or recycling the packaging materials, and, one more, whereas producers of product packaging have taken sense of all responsibility for the management of post-consumer packaging in other parts of the world, including all European Union member states and five provinces in Canada, and as a result have greatly increased recycling rates, expanding infrastructure investments, created jobs, and reduced taxes and costs. Now therefore be it resolved. We, the Select Board of the Town of Lubeck, support an extended producer responsibility, otherwise known as EPR, for packaging law as endorsed by the legislature in the 2019 through the passage of the resolve to support Municipal Recycling Program LD 1431. We believe that this policy will work to make recycling in Maine more effective. Producers of packaging materials would have a directing economic incentive to produce less wasteful packaging that can easily and profitably be managed by municipal recycling programs, having shared responsibility between those who create the waste and those who manage the waste, with foster recycling system improvements and enable greater participation recycling across Maine. More sustainable, an EPR, which was an extended producer responsibility law for packing is an insurance policy for Maine municipalities when global recycling markets are unfavorable. The current approach to recycling is not resilient to fluctuations in the global recycling market. When commodity prices fall unexpectedly, towns and cities may be forced to stop or restrict their programs. More equitably, Maine cities. More equitably, Maine cities, towns, and taxpayers are currently footing the bill for a problem they didn't create. With recycling reform, taxpayers will no longer pay for the cost of recycling since the net cost of recycling would be reimbursed, and the packaging manufacturers that produce less wasteful, more recyclable packaging would pay less than those who do not. This is a much more equitable way to distribute costs." So this resolve is signed and supported by the Lubeck Select Board.
I'd make a motion when we sign it. I've actually already read that.
Well, I think it was wonderful.
It is.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Rhonda wants to talk. Rhonda has to talk.
I went to the meeting in Metraeus where that lady came. Chuck and I collect a lot of trash, so we were invited. One of the concerns was that small, small producers might not get as much of incentive or recharge for their packaging. And she covered all that and made it very clear that this is more of a large company cost. And she answered any questions she had, and that was worked on for several years. It was an excellent meeting, and I think the conversation's recorded.
And, and I will tell you folks something, this is gonna sound crazy. My wife's business. We are required to, every quarter, send in how much we haul to the landowners, or the DEP. They wanna track this, they wanna track what we bring in for demolition and household. They're very serious about the program.
I just wanted to ask, I, I see a lot of nodding, but not towards you on the spot, but with all your years of recycling experience, Michael, you...
My recycling experience?
Well, you were in committee.
I'm supportive of the town's program, and we have one of the better programs, and it still works. But we do pay for it. Oh, of course.
So you're for this resolution?
But the, the world, uh, global recycling scene has changed, and... Yes. What's missing is companies in America, large or small, to source materials for their products from post-user, uh, materials. And so instead of us bailing it and sending it halfway around the world, now we need companies to step up and bring that manufacturing back here because this is where the resource is.
Yes.
Didn't we put you on the...
And I think some creative energy in this country to do something with it. Yes, I think it's very good. Now, is it up for, to go on the, the next legislative session?
Hopefully, then. Move away with that whole tax thing.
We have to get into committee and all of that, all of that.
Well, I mean, with that whole taxing of that.
That would be very good. So, uh, sign the fourth quarter sewer commitment, not as exciting as the recycling...
There was one that was, uh, air, so it's a smaller one.
Okay, so we need, uh, I'll make a motion that we sign the August first to October thirty-first. Sewer commitment in the amount of forty-two thousand two hundred and seventy-ninety-four. And ninety-four eighty-two, for the same time. Do we have a second? All in favor?
How you doing, Nancy?
Good.
There's a white over there. Anything else? Do we have something else?
No, I think there's a lot of...
Hold on, I thought you had, there's only two? Okay. So, um, we need to tentatively come up with a time for a special, uh, meeting to formally accept the Safe Harbor grant and to allow us to open a line of credit for the first thirty to sixty days of spending, 'cause it's a reimbursement grant. And I think we're also gonna ask for two thousand dollars from a fund that Renee discovered we had for, uh...
Harbor.
The harbor, it's a thirteen thousand dollar account. If we don't get it donated by someone, because between now and the contractual signing, we have to pay someone to finish some of the permits. There's a permit that has to be completed, it's called the National EPA, the NEPA permit. It's sort of like the DEP, but it's federal, and there's this, a lot of paperwork involved with, um, with water runoff mitigation. And once you build a parking lot, then you have to explain where the water's going. And there's some porous asphalt that we're thinking of using that, so it will not stir what was... That would cost us a little money, so we need, we are thinking we would like to ask the town if we could take that.
So what day do we have that could be the lucky winner?
Oh, no. What?
January twenty-seventh.
And it would be, um, what we'd do is we'd do it at five, uh, in conjunction with our select board meeting, so we would have it first, and then our meeting would follow immediately after, instead of having a half-hour gap.
If we promise coffee, maybe we'll get the same turnout.
Maybe.
We'd eat twenty-five.
How about donuts?
How about some of that chili you guys made?
Actually, twenty-five people.
No still here?
So is that, okay, everybody over here?
January twenty-second.
You took five years off me yesterday.
So do we have, um, a motion to do that? Make a motion?
So, all of the times again?
January...
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, which would be at five, and then the select board meeting to follow.
Okay.
And that's coffee and Chuck and Jim's chili.
Right. That sounds pretty good to me. I've had the chili.
They love me bringing chili.
I miss it.
And I will.
Who you guys gonna open a restaurant?
Hey, just so you know...
You need the money.
This meeting ends with four seconds, that's not a negative time frame, right?
No. All right. Sorry, we're having a waste fund, but we have another thing to leave there.
You do?
Yes, Renee, uh, wrote a fantastic letter in support of Lubeck Landmark's grant. They had to have, the deadline was on Friday, and it was to be supportive of them getting money to lift up the, which building is it?
Smokehouse.
The smokehouse. And we also got a letter from the harbor master that it would help the safety of the navigation. And so I think it's for a hundred thousand dollars, right? I believe that's the amount of the grant.
And who was writing that?
Uh, Sam Wench, who is president of Lubeck Landmark.
Yeah, but he's writing the grant?
Yes.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
You're Sam.
Yes, he's writing the grant. Don't look at me, I didn't do it.
Oh, I thought it might've been him.
So, uh, abatement. Do we have another abatement?
This was, um, one of the abatements you signed earlier for assessing, but, um, because that needs to protect it since it's for you and the site.
It's the same thing?
This is for real estate, one of the accounts we're talking about.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept, uh, an abatement in thirty-three forty-eight real estate account two-one-zero-two.
Thirty-eight, thirty-three dollars and a hundred and fifty.
Money?
Yes.
So move.
All in favor? Who certainly moves? Other business. I'd like to make the motion to appoint Mike Scavani to the Budget Committee.
Second.
All in favor? Now, the reason why we, we had an opening is 'cause Joanne was on the Budget Committee, Joanne Casey. She's now a school board member, and she can't sit on the Budget Committee at the same time as she will be sitting on her own committee as the school representative.
You're welcome.
Who's second in my motion? All in favor? Thank you very much, Michael. Renee will let you know when we're starting this. Committee updates, okay. What about Julie? Did we have anything else we were gonna say?
About the Safe Harbor?
Oh, yes. Just anything at all? We're at committee updates now. Since you were here, I kinda would tell you this. We just, we gave them everything they wanted for now, so...
I thought we were in the hold until the approval of the acceptance of the money.
Do you talk about anything? What?
At, at the last meeting, I thought it was discussed that we were gonna have another meeting until...
We're, we're not. We're just, we're not, we just, we're just giving a...
Chucking through little hoops that they've asked us to do. It's just getting all our ducks in line, just...
Pretty much it. Oh, okay. So as far as we know, the next Safe Harbor meeting is going to be an hour before the Harbor Board meeting, the fifth month, fourth, the fourth Monday of the month on the twenty-seventh at five, January twenty-seventh. But I think we may have an earlier one since we have a special town meeting to talk about it. So we might have to have a Safe Harbor meeting that month, um, before the special town meeting. So we'll, we'll be in touch with the committee members, just looking. We'll keep that one, but we might have to have a quick special, just to make sure that everything is right for them.
And that's the twenty-seventh?
The twenty, Monday, the twenty-seventh. But I think right after the holidays, we should make to make sure that what's on the special town meeting, that the committee doesn't have anything to add to it. So tentatively, we could, we could make that... What's going on on the sixth?
We're bombing loans the sixth at three P M.
So can we do the sixth at five if we had to? Is that okay with you, Julie?
I think we can keep ours under two hours.
Because, because we have to have the, um, Renee has to write up the articles of the, the more right things. Still thinking this was Carol's. They're all written, great. But let's, if, I say we meet and just make sure that we have everything in order. And there's, other things have occurred since we met before, like... Five o'clock, good, yes. January sixth at five. Shellfish for, uh, Sonia. Committee updates, I, I went out of order. We should've started with you. Sorry. Oh, that's the first, well, you, it's the first Monday of the month at six, so you'd be after our meeting.
Green crab, Sonia. Yes, green crab trout, we talked about.
I'm the second Monday of the month.
She's writing...
For what?
Sonia, she's writing a grant.
No, it's the fourth Monday now. It's the fourth, it's the fourth Monday of the month after Safe Harbor at six.
You're saying it, and I'm remembering it, but I can't pull it out right now. I was briefly at the shellfish meeting, and they talked, and it was asked, they voted, they wanna acquire some funds to get green crabs. And there would be some conservation hour credits given for a bucket of green crabs, I think.
A bucket per hour or the max of two?
Thank you.
I was really trying, I was really trying. Two buckets. So they're gonna, they're gonna make out catching crabs. But the, but the thing is, we're kinda...
Wait, wait, wait.
When, when is the next shellfish?
It's always the first Monday of the month, so it'll be, uh, right after the Safe Harbor meeting on the sixth. So it'll be, you know, we're at five, they'll be at six. Uh, Rachel?
Yeah, our recycle meeting is, is February the fourteenth, where it resumes.
Oh.
Valentine's Day.
But maybe there'll be something good about this re-reparating.
If something happens, I will call another meeting.
Is the Recycling Committee willing to speak on behalf of this LD? I mean, you usually have to go into a gust of his speech.
My good, my good.
That'd be good.
That's at what time?
Four o'clock. Are you coming back, Michael?
Just ask him, let you know. Even when you sit on the Budget Committee, that's gonna be a bit busy.
I don't wanna spread myself too thin.
No, no, don't do that. We want you on budget.
The Harbor Board, the last meeting we had, we spoke about the broken bumper again. Dead memory there. And we spoke about collecting all the mortgage, and how to go about that.
Very good.
Yes.
I like this. I like this committee update, it's very good. Dan?
I already had, we're bombing loans, I'd just like to say before we all go racing out of here that we better make sure that everybody has an amazing, wonderful holiday season, and safe holiday season. So for my part, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
And I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas as well, and a Happy New Year.
I think we all feel that way.
And Dan is a wonderful singer, is going to sing for us.
Next, next, next pudding, next pudding.
No, really, he was...
Next year, yes, next Christmas pudding, so get your tickets now.
Oh, okay.
I will be singing at the next Christmas pudding.
I think we're good. Now, public comment?